Chief, you're here tonight to call the meeting of order. And Councilor London.
President.
Congressman Fidy.
President, Councilor Dearing.
Here.
Do you have one absence? You want to go first? Thank you. We all have had a chance. We have minutes to pass out ahead of time for the regular council meeting of July 3rd and the meeting of 2018. Do I have a motion on those minutes? Or is there anything you want to send to each of you?
I make a motion that the minutes from the pre-council meeting and the regular meeting of July 3rd, the reading of such be dispensed with since each member of the council's got a copy and that they be approved and submitted.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? If you care, thank you. Congressman Fidy?
I make a motion for the approval of the current bills for payment in the amount of ninety-two thousand, six hundred, twenty-three dollars and fifty-two cents.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, if you care. Do we have any professional or consultant reports tonight? Thank you. Mayor, it's your turn.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you all for being here. It's always nice when we see a crowd here for... It's always nice that this thing will work, but that's not... (laughter) All right. Maybe that's better. It's good to see you here. Thank you for coming, for being involved in your city. We have a number of things that we're going to cover tonight. They're all good, I can tell you that. And so, um... I'll get rid of this one right now. So, we're always happy to share good news with you. I am just delighted that you care enough to be here, whether it's for the fire department or for other presentations that we're going to be making tonight or for the business of the city. We're happy to have engaged folks with us. I want to say good evening to the council and thank you all for the work that you do. I know that a lot of you don't realize what these guys do, the calls that they take, the hours that they spend, the dinners that are interrupted, the family time that has had to be adjusted, but thank you all for what you do and for the time that you spend. We have a great city staff as well. I want to commend them. You'll see some of them here tonight and you'll hear from some of them tonight, but all of our city staff are just great people. As I see across the city, the things that are being done and the responses that our staff are doing, whether it's from the fire department, the police department, public works, senior senators, some of the great things that they're doing. You know, if you don't think the water department's important, it's like the water goes off. I'm glad to get those emails coming out. But anyway, we're very blessed with what we have here and I know that you recognize it. We're going to make some presentations tonight and we're going to begin with a couple of folks who are... Who have made us proud from growing up here, living here, going to Shades Valley. John, Councilor London, is the parks chair and I'm asking him to come down with me to make these presentations. And first of all, I want to say, this person here that we're going to recognize debunks my myth, okay? Um, I... Up until now, Morgan Williams, will you come forward, please, ma'am? Up until now, I've always could say, "Well, I can't play basketball because I'm too short." Okay? Well, you just debunked that myth. You all may recognize Morgan. She went to Shades Valley here. She played for Mississippi State, had at least two stellar years and ended the season in great play there. We watched you on TV from afar. Congratulations on your accomplishments. She is also going overseas, not sure quite where, to play basketball, to get paid travel and to play basketball. I couldn't ask for much more than that. John, you want to say something?
Well, first of all, she said we spelled her name right. I call her Williams because of the offense she makes and the people that she's guarding, it seemed like more than one on the court. I should have known so fast, so I called her Morgan Williams. She's the right one. Yeah, just cause.
Thank y'all. I know y'all not here for me, but it's a lot of y'all in here, so it's good to see y'all in Beatty, Iowa. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Okay, this next person also debunks my myth. I couldn't play football because I wasn't big enough. Deron Payne, would you come forward, please, sir? All of you, I'm sure all of you are Alabama fans, so he needs no introduction. Deron Payne, a member of the world... The national champion, Clemson tied, but what we're more proud of is grew up here and was a part of the Arndale community. Thank you for being here. Thank you for coming back. Thank you for representing Arndale so well.
First of all, Morgan and Deron, we watched these young people grow up in Arndale, Mayor said, and just to see what they are now and where they come from. I'm hearing these guys, fourth or third grader playing football in our program, you know, and we're just so proud of you and Morgan and what she's done. You know, Morgan was the giant killer who killed Connecticut last year, his last shot of the game, so we're so excited and proud of you guys. And they also have the family with them. Deron's got his mother back there in New York, who's also the champion right there. And MVP. Did y'all see the cats in the toe touch? Yeah, surprised me too.
Thanks.
Thanks, man.
Thank you for the award and I'm just glad to be here and happy to have a lot of great people just looking at you. Thank you.
Morgan and Deron, before y'all leave, I need an autograph tonight. You gotta go down. Come up here first.
All right. Our next awards are going to be made and presented to our fire department. I'm going to ask our fire chief, Chief Daniel, if you will come forward and I don't know who's helping you, if you by yourself here. Let me say this, just as a... By way of introduction and also appreciation, again, I talked about our staff in general. Our fire department, our police department are exceptional. We're here to recognize our firemen tonight. I listen to the radio, I want you all to know, I listen to the radio. Sometimes I don't like that when the mayor listens because then he calls for chief. But I was just listening last night, just as an example. I don't listen all the time, but I turn it on periodically and I was listening. When I say the radio, I'm talking about your service radio, but... And I heard some of the things that were going on last night and as I sat in the comfort of my living room in my recliner, I thought, "Man, that's kind of a dangerous situation they're going into and I sure hope they're okay and I sure hope I don't get another call," you know, "to be on this." So, I want you to know that I recognize that you put yourself in harm's way, that you do it as a matter of your job, but you do it more than that, as a part of who you are and of your service and your commitment to serving the residents of Arndale. And so, I want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you for doing that. I know not every day is like that, but there are those days and there are those times and we appreciate your service and what you all do.
Can everyone hear me? Do I need this?
Yes.
Good evening. Every morning when a firefighter wakes up, they do not know who or what they're going to come across during their 24-hour shift. Firefighters are trained to deal with situations and make decisions that the average person is not prepared to handle. During a fire, rapid decisions must turn into action rather quickly. A firefighter's training is put to use as they risk their lives for people and property. When occupants are not involved, it gives us a little more time to make decisions, but when occupants are involved, we have less time to make those decisions that need to Firefighting is inherently a dangerous profession. We have a saying, "Risk a lot to save a lot." That means that if there's a chance that we can save a life, we're willing to take a bigger risk. John 1513 says, "Greater love hath no man than this, that this man lay down his life for his friends." On the evening of May 11th, 2018, the Arndale Fire Department responded to a structured fire on Amber Hills Road. Apart from having to initiate fire attack, the crew learned there was an occupant inside. In the house were oxygen and propane cylinders that contributed to hostile fire conditions. A.O. Price and firefighter Harrison put aside their own safety to make entry and remove this occupant. Once the occupant was removed, medical care was initiated while crews simultaneously attacked the fire. What this meant was there was a lot going on that had to be done in order to mitigate the situation. Valor. Valor is described or defined as great courage in the face of danger, especially battle in a battle. A.O. Price and firefighter Harrison displayed valor in their actions of great courage when they risked their lives to find and remove an occupant from the fire. Making a decision to go in is just half the battle. Once you make that decision, you must fight almost zero visibility to even locate the victim. Once the occupant is located, you must carry them out while wearing at least seventy-five pounds of equipment. Though most would have to contemplate even going in, these two firefighters displayed great courage in the face of danger and that is why tonight they will receive the Medal of Valor. A.O. Price, would you please come up?
(laughter) (applause)
This medal should always signify that these two gentlemen risked a lot to save a lot. made the split-second decision to enter a burning structure to remove an occupant. Let us please stand and give these gentlemen a hand. The next person that I would like to recognize is a person that had a huge responsibility during this incident. During any fire or any incident, someone has to be in charge. Someone has to evaluate the situation and make decisions to mitigate it. During this incident, the commander had to not only implement tactics to control the fire, but he had to ensure that patient care was initiated and carried out. Commander had to call for mutual aid and be accountable for those units as well. It's not an easy job to carry out, I can promise you. At this time, I would like for Captain Wes McDaniel to please stand up. The next award that we are going to give are unit commendation awards. LaBlanc. A.O. Price. A.O. Price. A.O. Burke. A.O. Masters. A.O. Bass. A.O. Bass. A.O. Masters. A.O. Masters. A.O. Masters. A.O. Masters. A.O. Masters. A.O. Burke. 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 All of these gentlemen responded to this fire and either fought fire, handled patient care, or performed both during this incident. As I've said before, there were a lot of things that were going on during this incident that had to be dealt with. These gentlemen showed dedication, professionalism, and courage throughout the duration of this call. These gentlemen represent what the fire service and Arndale Fire Department is about. That is why tonight we are honoring them with the unit commendation medal. The unit commendation medal is awarded to a group of individuals that have performed service to the department in a highly commendable manner. These gentlemen work together to accomplish a not-so-easy task. Please give these gentlemen a hand. The microphone when we work together with the fire department.
That's right. Can you right here again?
Yes. The next recognition that I would like to give out is to a profession where many times you were heard and not seen. A public safety dispatcher has the edge of the world in the operations of an emergency scene. They must first receive the call of an emergency and determine what agencies and what units to dispatch. Once this occurs, especially in a fire scene, the job has only just begun. The coordination of resources that is being requested by the incident commander must be carried out by the dispatcher. On this particular day, our two Arndale dispatchers were Billy Christie, if you can come up. These two were charged with receiving the call, dispatching the initial units, as well as mutual aid units. They were responsible for acquiring the needed ambulances along with utility companies. Without their efforts, the responsibility would have fallen back on the incident commander. This would have caused the incident commander valuable time that he did not have. So, without their efforts, everything that went on could not have been possible. Let's give them a hand. The next recognition that I would like to give are the members of Leeds Fire and Rescue and Regional Paramedical Services. I'm going to say the names of the regional paramedical services personnel. One of them is on military drill and could not be here. The other is stuck at the hospital with a patient, so they couldn't be here tonight. First responders must rely on each other in a time of need. Even though we may not all work in the same jurisdiction, when a neighbor calls for help, we respond. On this particular afternoon, the members of regional paramedical services, Derek Beard and Tyler Glenn responded to the call. They assisted with patient care and continued that patient care to the emergency department. The members of Leeds Fire and Rescue, Lieutenant Joshua Davis, firefighters Christopher Tipton, firefighter Don Mizell, and firefighter Morgan Norsworthy responded to and assisted with firefighting operations. Both entities showed professionalism and teamwork to accomplish the tasks that they were faced with. Let us give them a hand as we call them up. We'll start with Don Mizell. Even though these gentlemen only represent a third of our department, you should all know that Arndale Fire Department is full of personnel just like this. They're all willing to step up and do what needs to be done to protect the community and their property. While tonight is about these gentlemen and the actions that they took on this particular day, it is also about knowing that the Arndale Fire Department is always willing to perform these same types of actions when called to do so. Let us give all of those involved a hand one last time and let them know that their efforts did not go unnoticed and are appreciated.
Chief, before you step away, would you be kind enough to introduce your ranking visiting tonight?
Yes. I apologize.
Couldn't help but say sorry.
Right here is Chief Parsons of Leeds Fire and Rescue and we'd like to thank him too. He has a great department. That's where I came from before I came here. We've worked together for many years and it's nice to know that we have neighbors next door that are willing to come and help whenever the time calls. The next item of business tonight is I want to announce an important milestone in two of our firefighters' careers. As a firefighter, it's important to be better than we were the day before. We're always trying to master our craft through training, experience, dedication, and discipline. To some, this is becoming the best firefighter that you can be. To others, it means that you want to rise in the ranks of the department. While both mindsets can balance and create a direction that supports the vision of the department, the achievement of a promotion is a great day for a firefighter that has put forth the effort to do so. At this time, I would like to announce the promotion of Daniel Ray and Robert Thompson to apparatus operator. Daniel Ray, you'll come forward. sharp. Robert Thompson. This is the day that they have officially accepted the responsibility to serve their respective communities. They have dedicated themselves to the department and to those they serve with. Today, these two gentlemen have taken their responsibility to a new level. They are openly accepting the responsibility to ensure that fire engines are ready to go at a moment's notice, to get their crews to all call safely, and to respond to incidents in a timely manner by knowing their territory and knowing their equipment in order to operate it in the most effective manner. These two gentlemen are also stepping into a leadership position within the department. They have accepted the responsibility to assist their officers in the execution of their duties. Along with this new badge comes a new set of responsibilities. I hope you gentlemen understand the weight that this badge carries and do everything in your power to ensure the safety, efficiency, effectiveness, and well-being of the citizens and the department are always top priority. Let us congratulate these two on a major accomplishment in their careers as I present to you again apparatus operator Daniel Ray and Robert Thompson. And I would just like to finish with, it's been about six weeks since I've been here. I was actually still working at the Leeds on the call that we gave the medals for. I was on my way home and stopped because I saw the smoke and got to work with these gentlemen before I was even hired here. Since I've been here, I've been around talking to everyone that works here and I can promise you, everybody that works at Arndale has the same mindset. They want good things for the department, they want good things for the community, and everyone is willing to work to get there. I would just like to congratulate these gentlemen and... I would just like to congratulate these gentlemen and our whole department for the hard work and the good job that they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I think you all have a reception, is it right, planned in the library meeting room? Friends, if you want to go, if you're here for the rest of the council meeting or if you want to stay, we'll dismiss any of you that want to go ahead and take. I can tell you, the cake probably is a hot pot of this.
Give everyone a chance to clear the room while it's cold.
Very impressive ceremony, and I now want to thank our assistant chief, Chief Orione. That's him. I assume the only partner that was in the room, I assume you have no partner heading towards tonight. And we'll start out with comments from the councillors that will sit down and keep the council up.
Well, just first of all, good evening to everyone. Before time, I'd say, glad to see y'all here.
Thank you. Council, good evening as well. Thank you everybody for being here.
Well, I took a ride around just forward, and normally do about once every four, six weeks, two weeks ago, and it's because of that fire that they went to. I started looking around Amber Hills Road and the old Jefferson East Fire District in particular. And fire hydrants for that part of Irondale are sparse and far between, and we need to look at putting in some fire hydrants in a manner in which the fire department can get hoses to fight a fire. The fire that they're talking about is nearly half a mile from the nearest fire hydrant. So we need to look at this old Jefferson East Fire District, I know part of it's in your district, David, and we need to see about getting some fire hydrants put in. And that's all I got to say right now. I'd like for the fire department to go out and survey or give us a survey of that area.
We've already been looking at that, and this won't be an immediate issue. We'll bring back up proposals, if we want to have something more concrete. It's about $3,000, $3,500 each per fire.
Any idea or how many it's going to take?
No, we just looked at that one specific area so far, but.
All right, thank you.
Okay. On my report, I think I'll defer, we had a good CDA meeting today, and there were comment meetings during that meeting, and there's one member of the CDA board here tonight, and I appreciate you seeing just mention that to the council. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Yes, we met at 11:30 in the CDA office, and on behalf of the CDA, I'd like to mention to the city council that all the board members present were unanimous in this decision. Approaching the city council to ask if there are any services that are important because of the financial crisis that you're faced with, that you plan on perhaps discontinuing or cutting, please get back with us, give us an estimate of cost. The CDA has a surplus, and we would like to help to avoid having to cut down any services needing the community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the time.
I did forget something. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I got a question for you two. Saturday, June, July 19th, Saturday, the Polyguards Neighbor Association is having a fun day from 10 to 3 o'clock, and everybody is welcome. This coming Saturday from 10 to 3 o'clock, everybody is welcome. Could the council give a note, those meetings, those meetings, in case we can make it? CJ meeting?
Mayor.
James Stewart, post the meetings.
He always sends out a copy of the posted notice to all of us.
Good evening.
I got our emails, our crew's email.
I think I got it. I'll make sure, make sure I get it.
Mayor, may I do one quick read read before I finish, and is that, would you mention your town hall meeting, just to get everybody in the mindset?
I will, we're having another town hall meeting August the...
16th.
16th, here in this room at...
6:00.
6:00. That's about the fifth one that I've done since this administration's been in the last year and a half. I committed to doing that during the campaign time when we were talking about communication, and so it gives everyone, the residents, an opportunity to ask any questions that they want to ask, and no topic is really off limits at that point. There's some very good discussions in the past that invite all of you to come. I think maybe some of you have been there, most of you may have not. So I'd like, of course, the council, but all the public as well to be there, and we'll do whatever the hot topic is at that time.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate that. Do we have in addition reports aboard the non-council committee? Shoemaker?
Didn't even raise my hand. Good evening. I would like to turn around.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Tellez Shoemaker. I'm the executive director of the Irondale Chamber of Commerce, and Lynn Moreno, who is president of the Irondale Arts Council, asked me to make this announcement for her tonight. The Irondale Arts Council is having their annual pop-up art sale out of the blue, and that will be next Friday, July the 27th, and Saturday, July the 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And this will be, the event will take place at Restored, that's located next to Habitat for Humanity on Crystal Boulevard. And just as a side note, this really is a fun event, so I encourage y'all to come and see what the Irondale Arts Council out of the blue has to show for you. And I do have two other announcements for the chamber. Just August 9th, United States Representative Gary Palmer will be our speaker. We will, we meet at Country Country Club, 11:30 to 1 o'clock, so you are all invited. And another thing you're all invited to attend, which I think is going to be really fun, first time to do this, is Beer and Bingo. And that is going to be on Monday, August the 20th, 5:30 to 7:30. Bingo starts at 6:00, and we are going to have that at Marty's. So if you want any more information, please see me. Thanks.
Thank you so very much.
What was the date on the table?
The beer?
August the 9th.
August the 9th.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, we are about to go into two different public hearings. Would ask that everybody please, if they have any interest in coming forward and speaking during those public hearings, that they complete a sheet in the back that gives information about you for the record, and bring that with you and hand to the city clerk when you come forward to speak. And if you would also be kind enough to do that during open comments on agenda items and open comments to the public at the end of the meeting. So we will start. Do I have a motion that we leave regular council meeting and go into public hearing?
Make a motion, we leave regular council meeting and go into its public hearing, item number one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Notice is hereby given that at its regular public meeting beginning at 6:30 p.m. on July 19th, 2018, and the Irondale City Council Chamber is located at 101 20th Street South, Irondale, Alabama, 35210, within Jefferson County, Alabama. The city council of the city of Irondale will hear comments from interested citizens concerning the proposed rezoning of 835 Gadsden Highway, Birmingham, Alabama, 35235, from A1 Agricultural District to C1 Commercial District. And we have Mr. Gerald's here, if there's any specific question. First, is there anybody here in support of that issue?
I'd like to ask a question first, if you may.
Let's do the, we'll do questions right now, and just finish the public hearing party, then you can ask questions, if you don't mind. Okay? Do we have anybody here in support of? Do we have anyone here opposed to it? Okay, now, council?
Do we know what they want, the rezoning for, what they're going to put in there?
She just wanted to sell her property, which is next to some of the other commercial properties out there. There's two houses, I think, not in use, as houses anymore to do that.
Okay. Ask for that.
With that comment, then, I have a motion that we leave regular coun, uh, leave public hearing and go back to regular council meeting.
Fair. Do we have a comment?
You need to speak.
I'll make a motion that we leave public hearing and go back into regular council meeting.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. So we're going on to item number two, public hearing.
Make a motion that we leave regular council meeting and go into public hearing for item number two.
So I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion here. Notice is hereby given that at its regular public meeting beginning at 6:30 p.m. on July 19th, 2018, and the Irondale City Council Chamber is located at 101 20th Street South, Irondale, Alabama, within Jefferson County, Alabama. The city council of the city of Irondale will hear comments from interested citizens concerning the proposed amendment to ordinance 01-0598, section 5-07, gasoline service stations. And I will now open it for comments. Is there anybody here that has comments in support of that motion? Or that order to change?
Cindy Quayart, 5729, Delmont Drive. I'd like to state that I'm in favor of this motion that you have here. It's a good change, and I fully support it. I ask you please vote for it.
And any more comments on the support side? If not, do we have anyone that's here to speak against it? And remember, this is a cleanup of an existing ordinance to make it more in line with what surrounding communities. It does not affect in any way, shape, or form what's already been done with the property that's been rezoned for the station, racetrack station. That's already been approved, coming all through the approvals, all the exceptions have been approved, so this does not affect that one way or the other. This is just a cleanup of the existing ordinance. So please.
My name is Carly Stanford, 2316 Second Avenue North. Actually, based off your statement, I have a change of what I want to ask. Could you please explain how the ordinances are going to approve for the racetrack? You're saying that it's within for less than 750 feet of the existing gas station?
Do you want to go through that?
We have a board zoning adjustment, who are here as variance cases that are filed by applicants. The applicant for racetrack came in and filed two then, because in the writing, which is in the ordinance here, it says places of, places of public assembly. And let me read you a few places of public assembly in C1.
Okay.
And this is right from our book here. The private institutions, which would be schools, including tutoring trade schools, dance schools, business colleges, sports funding schools. You come on down, public assembly buildings, including theaters, auditoriums, clubs, and lodges. We have two existing service stations also, just to give you an example. We have a vacant C1 building sitting out on the corner across from it. Should the masons, should the patrol or the police who are large, should somebody like that, or a club buy that, that would put both of those service stations, who are not that much, they were both in the 500 feet number. In non-conforming use. They were then, if they're destroyed by fire over 75% or a tornado or something, they would have to come to the board of zoning adjustment to get a variance to even build that. There are so many, because it doesn't specifically say church, school, it says places of public assembly. Actually, a clinic, the public goes into a clinic and sits there. The public meeting she was just talking about being up at Marty's. You're assembling the public for a specific little, so it's sort of arbitrary, it covers too many things that it has to be in wait for. So the board, in their decision, they heard this thing, and also the two existing service stations we have, not 200, less than 250 feet far, and they're supposed to be 700 feet on the same side of the road. They heard the variances, they heard some other presentations and evidence with it. They made the decision to allow the variances to 700 and 200, pending, because this was coming forward then to the PNC, the recommended city council. It was made pending the approval of the zoning and the recording of the record play.
Okay. Perfect. Add another question. Who proposed this ordinance change specifically then? Is that, you're saying?
That's my job.
You proposed it?
Yes, ma'am. I made the change, brought it to the planning zone, we held our public hearing, and they recommended the change to the council.
Okay, so anyone who can, if you learn to make a change in the future?
If it's pending, if it's something that's viable like this is, this places a burden on existing businesses because the word public assembly, and also the word gasoline service station, it's not a service station anymore. That, this, our book is written in 88, it's a little bit outdated definition.
So then why aren't you changing any of the other, like 15 to 17 parts of that ordinance that say service station?
They're fixing to do.
Do you change all?
They have, or you assigned me, we have an Article 5, which this is under, it's not under specifically that C1 section, other than it refers you to, as stated in Article 2, which is Article 5, and they have, because we've got several planes under that special use in Article 5 that need to be changed, and the PNC has...
This one was just...
Everybody told me to go ahead.
Mr. Gerald's, for the sake of public hearing, I think we discussed, we're here to hear pros or cons on the change, not why it's like it is, that's been settled. We made that statement upfront, so if you have anything directly to address to the council or to Mr. Gerald's concerning why you're against it, you're welcome to.
I'm against it because I don't understand the process of how this happens.
Okay, that would be something you would need to do outside of this venue.
No, it's the public hearing.
Not, it's for a specific purpose like I read, and that's what the discussion will be kept to, please.
Okay, then I, then I do have one more question?
And you passed your three minutes off, so.
No, I'm not, actually. I, I'm confiding myself.
Well, it's funny, Mike.
So my other question would be, how many people are on the board of the zoning and...
Again, that's not a question for this meeting, you can just stand outside of this meeting.
Very relevant question.
Right, again, outside of this meeting, that would be an appropriate place to clarify that.
How many people are on the board of planning zoning adjustments?
We have, we have five members and two super numeraries, with one vacant seat right now.
Really? Okay.
Okay. We'll give you some comments. Again, this is specific to what's been read as the purpose of the public hearing, and that's where it should stay. That's why we're here about moving on. At this point, do we have any questions from our council members?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
In the...
What's that? One more? Excuse me, I'll give you one minute.
No, go ahead, you go.
Okay, go ahead, please. Again, the record related to what was read.
Anderson at Clay Warren, 423 20th Street South. You said that there is five members with one vacancy, correct?
No, ma'am, I said there are five members and two super numeraries, and we have one vacant.
Okay, and so if anybody wanted to propose an ordinance change, I could come directly in.
No, ma'am, not ordinance change. Ordinance changes you go to planning zones.
Okay.
For a variance or special exception, you go to the board of zoning adjustments.
Okay. Okay, so my next question then is, where was it measured that the distance between the raceway station and...
Again, we're going off track as we explained, this is going through all the legal procedures.
My next question then, my next question, I'm within my three minutes, is why is this coming up now? Why was this brought up to, you say, to clean up?
Again, that's not a question for this public hearing. That is something you're welcome to address through the mayor's office and the city clerk's office, and come back to a regular council meeting, but that is not what we're here tonight. And I'm sorry, if you like to laugh about it, you're welcome to leave the room, it's not as funny.
Well, it's not funny to me either, because I like to answer questions.
Again, it's a, it's a public hearing, but not for that specific purpose. If you have those type of questions, those need to be done. If you have those type of questions, those need to be done outside of this meeting. Mayor?
Actually, that's a priority. It is a public hearing. It is for them to hear you, not for them to debate with you.
And I'm not trying to debate, I'm trying to get answers.
I understand what you, what it's a hearing, it's for you to express whatever you want to express. They are to listen, and then they will deliberate and make what decision they choose.
Okay, well then, I'll make a statement. I have not seen anything in writing to say how far exactly the raceway station is going to be from the church. There has been nothing to say that measurement. So before knowing that you guys want to change this, I would like to see something to say it is exactly this amount, because if it's over that amount, that would make it pressing as to why you're changing it today.
No, ma'am, as stated earlier, that went through the variance, that was granted for the space that is between the station, that has been taken care of, that has gone through all the process, including posting and public hearing. It then went to planning and zoning, and this was an adjustment that had nothing to do with that. It was cleaning up after the fact.
Mr. President, I'd be happy to stay afterwards and explain the process, if you'd like. If you'd like, I'd explain how the variance works and all that, because, I mean, that's where the confusion is, I think, is why.
Well, there's a lot of confusion because there's unanswered questions, yes?
I'll be happy to stay in these two.
And ask questions.
Thank you. Now, any additional?
I do, I do have a question.
Please.
Language?
Now, remember, this is basically a statement, okay?
I, yes. It's a question about the language from the one ordinance to the new change specifically. So, I mean, I'm saying, I want to stay within the rules.
But you're saying you don't support it for?
Yes. But it's, but it's a question, um, because it seems like we would want to keep some language about how far apart we do want gas stations to be. As a resident of Irondale, I'm at 2012 Second Avenue South, right next to the library, as a resident of Irondale, coming into the main entry point of our city and just seeing gas station on top of gas station on top of gas station, doesn't look pretty, it doesn't look welcoming, it doesn't look like a neighborhood, um, when you see that. So I, I do want to support language that still leaves a requirement about how far away gas stations can be from one another. Because this, this proposed ordinance change takes all of that out and just leaves it a destruction of whoever's there, and I, I get that, because there needs to be some destruction, and I know that variance ordinances happen, and I know that sometimes we make exclusions for people, and I know that sometimes, um, things have already happened and we have to grandfather in things, but leaving some language as to how far away, how close gas stations can be to one another, does seem to be in our best interest as a whole community.
From a legal, from a legal perspective, in the issue of the variance, the courts will look at whether the criteria that you're using to grant a variance or deny a variance is arbitrary and appreciable, and the reason this is coming before the council is to not create those arbitrary, appreciable categories and criteria that the court could look at to challenge, or that someone could use to challenge the, um, the variance. So that is one of the reasons why this is going before the council at this time.
It does, in respect, we had our, the building inspector looked through the codes, that's the reason it said it must be in all federal, state, and those codes and requirements. So that's where it's at, because there's no, he went through the building codes and everything, and there was no distance in, and if you find around in some other cities, you can see a lot of service stations very, very close to some of the things I read you here, and that our ordinance says that places of assembly, so we're still leaving it there, but we're leaving it to the code, because since 1988, your gas tank codes of all chains are double lining now for leakage protection, they have automatic shut offs at the pumps, so there's a lot of different codes that cover the safety aspects of things.
And I appreciate that, and I hear you, and I thank you for listening to me, but I do hope that everyone has heard the sentiment here, which is that our community being lined up with gas station after gas station after gas station is not the best foot forward, it feels like, for our community.
Thank you. Any comments?
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm, I just got a little confused. I'm sorry, I just, that's after you talk, I, I don't know, I ain't know a lot of those terminologies used. So I'm confused. So are we taking the terminology out, or how far distance the gas station could be from one another, are we taking that out?
The distance is changed, the requirements of federal, state, local, building codes, state codes, fire codes, all of those have to be met.
So by, by this change, makes?
That's really, at the bottom then, we're changing the two distances, because you've heard all of the things I read, there are places of public assembly, that if the other two something, if this is in there, the other two ones have, had a tornado, right, wants them out, they'd have to go to the variance board, leave where they built.
Right, so right now, we're, we're, the ordinance says 250 feet?
I think it was 200 feet, I think it was 200 feet to 700 feet.
Okay.
The two service stations that are there are 250 feet.
So what's the max right now?
The max right now is 750 and 500.
So it can be right now, with the ordinance, it can be 750 feet. So that's in, that's in the order that will change.
Right, like I said, we have the two existing, next one is 260 feet apart, they're built according to the tax records in 1994, 56 years ago.
And what Mr. Gerald's proposed was bringing us up to date with other cities where he also serves and the summer capacity that are around us, uh, we're updating to be in line with what's being done elsewhere, as Mr. Rosenberg stated, not to be arbitrary and appreciable on how we make that determination.
So if I could put it in the way, Mr. President, I'm not, so, uh, let me, let me try to do that, and I think what you've heard partly is a different argument about racetrack, this is not about racetrack. This is about, this is about an ordinance that, um, in cleaning up and keeping us out of potential illegal that will locate us down the road. Basically, it's arbitrary, arbitrary meaning, we just picked a number, you know? We don't have a reason for it, you heard tonight, you know, 750 now, but we should have something, so let's make it 200, or let's make it 300, or 500, or, that's arbitrary, because we have no basis for it. And I think what the legal precedent says, uh, because of some cases I'm introducing, uh, is that you can't restrict a business, just because you don't want that business there, that's arbitrary. That's, that's saying, okay, we're going to put restrictions on that, you know, let's say businesses that sell cherry pop cymbals, and we're going to say that they can't be located within a certain distance of a church or, or whatever. In Houston, we all grew up when we know, you, you remember in Houston, you didn't have a place that sold alcoholic beverages, then a thousand feet of church or school. Well, it's my understanding, that's not, that's not legally defined.
County, when I was county, county whip, it was Hall versus Jackson County, I think, and it's in the Pennsyl area, and the ruling, they finally came down from the court, you cannot legislate a retail sale commodity.
So, so, so let me, let me decide whether you are to vote to clean this ordinance up, which you should do, or whether you should listen to an argument saying somehow this may save us, save us from racetrack. If you vote this in or vote this down, it's not going to make any difference about the racetrack decision, because they've done what they were supposed to do. They got a variance from the zone board of adjustments, they got the planning and zoning, they got, it went to the council, and the council approved it. So, so, I mean, that process is, is, the ship has sailed, okay? And, and so to muddy this up with whether or not we like or want whichever side of the fence you're on, want racetrack, is irrelevant, because this is not going to change, whichever way you vote, is not going to change the decision on racetrack, period.
I do have said questions. The prior language, we, we've been talking about two measurements, 500 and 700, right? 500 was?
Between, a public assembly.
Okay, and 700 was?
750 with another service station on the same side of the road.
Okay, gotcha. Um, so we're talking about bringing those in line with other codes, out of state codes, federal codes, all those, so the new two measurements are what? The new two measurements?
Whatever they are in those books, I'm, you know, I'm Charles.
We don't know what those numbers are?
There's no distance, there's no distance.
So the distance is zero from those two measurements?
It could be next door, I think, right?
Uh, if you're right around through Vestavia, Homewood, uh, on some, they don't have that many, Birmingham, Hoover, uh, you're going to find them close, you're going to find some station in the city close to some place, type place in the city. That, that's the whole catch. It's, it doesn't say church, it doesn't say school, and here we have, for churches and schools, we have institutional ones on, that's only two districts they can go in, that's a protected thing for them.
Not just that. I guess what I'm trying to say is, I feel like we're voting on a distance, but we don't even know what the distance is.
It's, you're voting, the statement, the statement is the existing building codes, federal, state, local, what they want.
So there, so we're voting on something, that there is no distance? That is the code, that there is no distance?
That's what they must comply with to get built.
Okay, that's where I always come from, if you don't know those numbers.
It's around 400.
Okay. Thank you.
And just a closing comment, in Crestline, for example, there's a Chevron station with a $600,000 house sitting right next door on Ugood, it's sold three times in the past 10 years, but it hasn't affected the price yet, never changed the way that station's situated. And the other Shell station is just down from City Hall, so, you know, this happens all over the area.
We love your folks.
You know, we can.
Hey, one question, on this language in the ordinance right here, it says no gasoline stations hereafter be located, and no property should be used in such except to approve or be approved by the planning and zoning board.
Yes, yes. Now, next Thursday, you've got to leave, because when the planning and zoning voted on it, they split three thirds. But what this is, is in Article Five at the top of it, if you'll read on down, is this one which required that. Plus, it has to have so much road frontage, it has to have so, so many citizen control interests, it has to have other things that are just pertinent to the site, and normally that's done, because PNC has seen those at the regular meeting, how they're, because it was three thirds split, got to come back and seek that for, seek a majority vote. It says, yes, it may, they've met on these, probably wouldn't say have, they've met on those, but.
So that's going back to?
Because it says they must do that, we're coming back to PNC because they split three thirds.
So this has to go back to PNC? So shouldn't it, shouldn't it go back to PNC before it comes to us?
It did not come back to you again, that's just PNC. You all will not get it again, you have already finalized the zone, this is just the review of the plan itself, and what's required as far as landscaping, entrances, the size of the lot, da, 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 da. If you read on down through the rest of that article. That's the reason I said, our Article Five contains the things that are normally done by our city engineer and our building inspector, you know, so, there's a lot, if you've looked at Article Five, there are several categories, theaters, a bunch of them, a lot of different things in there, mobile home parks, they have to meet certain criteria, but it all says planning and zoning to approve that, just like planning and zoning approves record plans, and how they'll get them. Not the zoning, the zoning was recommended by them to go and have to file such.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we leave the public hearing and return to regular council meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, we're back into regular business. Somebody like to move forward with the agenda?
Make a motion that the agenda be approved just immediately.
Do I have a second on that motion on the agenda? Now, I was seconded to, we call for a vote, all those in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? Period. And open for public comments, and that would be on item one, only because we've had public hearings on items two and three. Does anybody have comments on item one? All right? Not, we'll move forward to new business. Anybody like to start with number one?
Make a motion that Resolution 2018-R41 be approved.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right? Start with number two on the, two on 1819.
I'll make a motion that ordinance number 2018-19 be considered read.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll make a motion that all rules that prevent the immediate consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2018-19 be suspended, and that unanimous consent be given for immediate consideration of this ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, counsel London?
Yes.
Counsel Spidey?
Yes.
Counsel Hurd?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
I'll make a motion that ordinance number 2018, that, 2018-19 be finally passed and adopted as introduced.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number three?
I'll make a motion that ordinance number 2018-20 be considered read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll make a motion that, that all rules that prevent the immediate consideration and adoption of ordinance 2018-20 be suspended, and that unanimous consent be given for immediate consideration of said ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll call vote, counsel London?
Yes.
Counsel Spidey?
Yes.
Counsel Hurd?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
I'll make a motion that ordinance number 2018-20 be finally passed and adopted as introduced.
Do I have a second? I second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
No.
One thing I just, I'm more than well become to revisit this tonight, but there's some clarification that me and John are both confused on, okay? So if we can talk about that for a second, I'm more than happy to attempt to revisit this, but if the procedure disallows it, then we can redo this.
Well, you two would have to make a motion to reconsider.
Revisit it.
But am I, am I allowed to ask a question right now?
You have to make a motion to reconsider the ordinance.
I make a motion to reconsider the ordinance.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Any favors?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So the question is the language around, um, shall be used as such, except, as approved by the planning and zoning. So I know y'all were having a chat just a moment ago, I don't understand, is PNC the final authority on a gas station?
Yes, ordinance, it's on those things that are there.
Okay.
In Article Five, not under, uh, our C1 zoning, which expresses all the use, uses, in terms of the gasoline service station, it'll refer you back to Article Two, the definition of gasoline service station.
Okay.
And then it refers you, for there, you go back over to, where it says you can sell gasoline down at, at gas online repairs, our service station states, I'll do my, even my repairs, it refers you back to Article Five, which says the planning and zoning board was approved, it's actually virtually the layout, the location, you can read through all those things. That distance was, was one of those that was requiring now, uh, the certain size of lots, so, so much plenty on the existing road and all those things. But that does not come back to y'all, that is the planning and zoning commission.
I understand that, subdivision of properties and things like that, yeah, I get that. What I'm saying is, um, so typically, in most cases, other than those cases, planning and zoning is a recommending body, and then things come to us, and then we say, air and air.
Only, yes, on zoning issues, on the C1.
Right.
The C1 zoning, there, and any zoning change, they're only a recommending body to you.
Right.
They're in charge of record plans, for the final approval, and then in Article Five, there's things that tend to, that, that owns to them.
But what this is, with the way I'm reading it, and I apologize if I'm, if I'm incorrect, it's, it's picking out, no gasoline station shall hereafter be located, and no property shall be used as such, except as approved by planning and zoning. So is the gas station the, the language, because I'm, I'm... Because I'm, I'm not sure if I'm giving P and Z responsibility that it have before. I don't know if I'm talking specifically about gas stations. I really don't know what I'm talking about. Yeah, and I know it's a convoluted process, but I wanna know what I'm looking on.
Several hundred uses in C one.
Right.
That are allowable uses.
Right.
Only a couple or three of them are in Article five that says that P and Z reviews their plan, they're submitted for these things.
Okay. So they already had the final approval on service station, filling station, whatever you wanna call it.
It was already some.
Right.
And everything else is done.
Okay. I understand that.
It's just a separate issue.
It's not giving them any power they didn't have originally to clean up?
No, 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 it's, it's Article, that's Article five that starts out.
That was my main point of question. Okay. Thank you very much for your explanation.
Does that mean we go through all the steps if we reimprove this? And it has to be improved by one or two members?
Well, the, uh, the motion to reconsider was already made, seconded, and approved. So now you, you go back to your ordinance process.
Do we, do we have to go through first and second step, or can it just be brought up for approval?
Uh, would I go through all the steps?
Do what?
I would go through all of the steps.
Mr. Spidey, would you be kind enough to reopen me if you will?
Sure. I'll have a...
All right. I make a motion that ordinance number twenty eighteen dash two be considered read.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I make a motion that all rules that would prevent the immediate consideration and adoption of ordinance number twenty eighteen twenty be suspended and unanimous consent be given for the immediate consideration of said ordinance.
Do I have a second on that? Second, all right? Roll call, vote, Counselor London?
Yes.
Counselor Spidey?
Yes.
Counselor Gere?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
I make a motion that ordinance, uh, number twenty eighteen dash twenty be finally passed and adopted as introduced.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We get three yeses?
Yes, you can bring them back.
Well, if we get three yeses, then pass it.
Yes, we got two yeses.
That's right.
And now we'll open the floor for comments, general?
We'll place it because we stopped telling you the second word.
It is a good one, it's a good one.
That's all right.
Um, I just have a comment about when citizens come up to make an address to the council. Uh, if you're very kind, very, very kind to ask questions or ask for clarification. Um, I feel like you're a little bit too stern in addressing them. I mean, they're just up here asking questions, as they're allowed to do. And I'm, I just, um, reiterate, I think you're just...
Two, two quick comments. There has been an ordinance on books for years, and there's two minute limit coming to the month. Uh, I did up that to one minute, so we added to the three. And when we're doing public hearings, it's for comments. Comments and support or against comments. It's not about questions at that point.
But, I mean...
That, that counsel?
Well, I have found that there are, there are, um, variances, if you, allowances.
Variance is, is something different to me.
No, I'm not, I'm not gonna get you. I'm talking about allowances and, and people coming up, and we, we are not trained, or citizens aren't necessarily trained in how to ask questions or to give their comments about something, because they don't have all the information that you do about an issue lately. And I have found in the past, when I, um, uh, went before the, for the variances, and with a neighbor wanting to, to build a garage, and we, the neighbors approved of it, and the board passed it and approved of it. But it turned out she did not build a garage, she built a storage building. And I went back to the board of variances. I'm making a statement, I'm taking that, asking questions. And at that time, I was told that there, they really have no teeth to make sure that the neighbor or this resident citizen did what they, uh, had approved for them to do. That if I wanted to sue, I could. Well, what good is having the, the board of variances? There's no teeth in what they... But that is nothing to, all I'm saying is I think you're a little bit harsh in how you approach the citizens who make them up here. Give them a little grace.
Thank you, appreciate your comment.
Can I make a comment? I, I think, to be honest with you, he's, he's more lenient, because this, the ordinance that rules procedures of the council states that questions can be asked between the work session and the pre-council meeting and the regular council meeting, if the presiding officer allows. It also states that the, uh, comments, uh, after the, by the public, after the approval of the agenda, is for comments to the council, not questions. He's allowing questions to happen, which is not in the ordinance. So I think he's very lenient, allowing questions to happen. But, uh, the cit, the city ordinance says that this, that time during the council meetings, comments and not questions.
Well, this was just my time, you can mind it, but, um...
Your, your time for questions is between the pre-council meeting and the regular council meeting. You ask, does anyone have any questions normally? And right after, right after pre-council meeting, and that's the time to ask questions about the agenda.
This is public comments, so I was just making comments.
Yes, that's comments, not, not the questions.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Cindy Quay, our fifty-seven, twenty-nine Belmont Drive. I've come to many council meetings for several years now. I've also attended your work sessions and your pre-council meetings. And when it comes to a public hearing, it is very clear that a concerned citizen either speaks in favor of and states why they're in favor of, or against and speaks why they were against. But they do not question the council, or the mayor, or the gentleman with the zoning. That's been the rules since I've been coming to your meetings. So I wanna defend you in what you're doing here. And I wanna thank you for allowing them to go a little bit off track, because they weren't clear on the process. But I would ask that you stick to what you're doing, because what you're doing is the right way of doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other general comments?
I have a general comment, not a question, comments. Um, I just wanted to state that I've, I've been very confused and I'm very concerned about the process of letting citizens, citizens know when things are happening. Um, according to Article, um, eight, we look at our provisions in our municipal code. It states that any act on a petition, the planning and zoning commission report shall be transmitted to the city council within thirty days after receipt, unless the city council grants an extension of such period. It further goes on to state, after having received the recommendation of the planning and zoning commission, or, or if no recommendation received prior to the expiration, giving not less than fifteen days' notice of the time, place, and object thereof by publication in newspaper of general circulation in the city, or by posting such notice in four conspicuous places within the city limits. And this is in reference to changes to our municipal code, fifteen days' notice. I was here on Tuesday to vote, and I took a picture of that board outside. I, I, I'm stating something. There's all of these things talking about how you let your citizens know changes are happening, and you know I was emailing this week. There is not a clear way to understand what's going on. The website does not have the information and is extremely concerning for someone who cares. And I, I really think that this council and this administration needs to take this seriously.
We may, I think the mayor's already offered, I'll explain it to her. The state law, the council, it says that we notice pay up by the five hundred feet flats. It's adjacent property owners or BCA, it's adjacent property owners, so we'll talk to them directly.
Sir, I was just talking about ordinance changes.
That's what I'm talking about.
She's talking about fifteen days' notice being posted in four places. That's what she's talking about, but I think that's her point. Did I hear you correctly, Carly?
That's, um, that's... Thank you.
Any additional comments? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, Jenny Brown, question. Uh, I'd just like to say that I agree with studies of Judy. Yeah, I agree with what you say. I think it comes across as being abrasive, and unnecessarily abrasive, when people get up. This is, when they're seeking information, it's not a public voting session. Like you repeated, told, told them, you know, it's either yes or no, which is a yes or no. When they're here, it's public, it's a, it should be a public conversation. And maybe it should be a little more friendly, because people are concerned about the city. They want information. If you want them to discuss it pre-council, then make that a little more discussion friendly as well. But I totally agree with her, it does come across as abrasive, and almost, and many times it comes across as steering the people. Is it yes? Is it no? It's, it's not an open discussion. So maybe pre-council, open it up, let people discuss freely without putting a timeout on them.
I think the time will withstand, but again, that's in the ordinance, and we will abide by the ordinance, so it's amended.
I agree.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Okay, and again, if you're taking note, the, the attitude has come across as abrasive, and you're seen, you're, I've been dismissed.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any comments additional? Any comments? You got anything? Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Matasha, and I live at fifty-five, seventeen Hunter's Hill Road. And I would like to make a comment about inspectors coming out to inspect the different properties that some Hunter Hills Road. Um, I have a neighbor that deck has toppled over off from his home. His backyard is completely overgrown, and it's coming over into my backyard. I've been calling for three years to have something done about that. I started calling again back in April. Nothing still hasn't been done. I called the inspector again on Tuesday, and he did come out. He came out at twelve fifty-four. He walked down his driveway, came back at twelve, twelve fifty-seven. And as soon as I was coming back in the house, my phone was wrong, and it was him telling me that he did look at it and a little progress had been made. No progress had been made in that backyard. I'm having to spend five, six hundred dollars to have my yard cleaned up, when as soon as I do that, it's raining, and his, his yard is just overgrown. It's coming all up on the side of his house now. The man has his mailbox sitting on crates. He cuts patches of his flat yard and just leave it there. So I'm coming to see what can be done about that. I've called for three years, and nothing has been done.
Well, you've addressed the front, the council does not control public works, or the inspector, and it's the mayor. And you mentioned that, I think the mayor's picked up on your message, and he would be the person to follow up there. We, we do not direct public employees.
Fifty-five, seventeen Hunter's Hill Road?
Mr. President, that's, and that's, that's one of your citizens in the district. I think you need to work with the mayor to make this, to get this solved.
Well, again, I think the mayor's got a very clear message, that he needs to follow up and have the inspector back out.
Well, the inspector has been out several times, and the inspector even told me that I need to just have it cut back. I don't think that's my responsibility to have it cut back.
Again, I think the mayor has your message, and he can follow up with his employees. Now the guy to work with, if there's anything we can do in my direction, again, your name, and give it all that, of course. Thank you. Sean?
I've been very patient, I missed, uh, thirteen thirty, uh, baseball game tonight. I don't want to be here. I've got several comments. First of all, I'd like to talk about Celebrated Irondale, which is December, September the twenty-ninth. And Exchange Club is sponsoring this, there, there are, uh, applications in the, in the city council in here, in the main office. Uh, I'd like to, uh, thank the state department for cleaning up exit one thirty-five at Chase Valley High School. They've gotten some barriers up there now, so we, uh, the city as well as I have been calling the state continuously, and they've got it cleaned up finally. Um, there's an Exchange Club meeting on the twenty-fourth, it's next Tuesday, at five-thirty. We'll have, uh, several great speakers there from our city, the council will show up. I would like to comment again about my sending all the council and the mayor a statement regarding parking on lawns in Irondale. I would like to see something done, this is a comment. I've been working on this for about six years, and I'm not gonna give up. Uh, also, I'd like to recommend or suggest that, that the council through, uh, our city clerk annotate at least those folks that have commented at council meetings, after the council meetings, in this area. It's, it's just like talking to the wind, because it's not annotated anyplace. It's not in, in minutes, it's not anyplace. So it's strictly up to the individuals listening here at the council and our, and council, to know what's happened here. I think it would be good for the city council to, to make a, a motion, or to do something to annotate what people have said here after the council meeting. Thank you.
It is all videotaped. It's on videotape.
Well, you can't hear that half the time, there, I'm sorry. You can't hear it if I're on it. It's not official.
All right. Any additional comments? At that point, I'll accept the motion for adjournment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All those in favor? All those in favor? Any opposed?